We're live? I take it we're live?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Everett School Committee for Monday, April 6, 2020. So order, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Sarni?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. La Monica?
Here.
Ms. Murray? Mr. Panerisi? Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Apprazze?
Yeah, we have seven members present. We have a quorum. Start off with the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna stand up. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Can I request a moment of silence for Mr. Sal DiGimigno? The father of Senator Sal DiGimigno, he died about a week and a half ago, please.
Absolutely. Thank you. Don't have a gallon. Rule number three, reading of the records.
Make a motion to waive the reading and accept as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of records except as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those eyes have it. Rule number four, reported superintendent, Madam Superintendent, welcome. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to note that there are no items under new business this evening. As we did want to keep reading relatively simple so that we could get used to the new format. So therefore, I'm gonna go ahead and start with item number one, which is the acceptance of the purchase of the new Chromebooks. So you should have received the quote for the Chromebooks for purchasing 2,000 additional Chromebooks that would put us to a one-to-one ratio for our students because currently we have 5,400 Chromebooks and we will have 7,400 Chromebooks in order to make sure that we have them for each student. The cost of this will be $400,000. There is no shipping cost that is attached to it. And we are proposing that it be taken from the instructional personnel fund because we have a balance in that fund. Under Instructional Personnel Services, we have a $500,000 balance. We also have a balance of $494,000 in our special ed tuition line. So our proposal was to take the money out of one of those lines.
I'll make a motion to accept the purchase of the Chromes.
I just have a question.
Who has the question?
Samantha.
But I'll second that. Ms. Lambert, please proceed.
And will this additional, so the amount of Chromebooks, will this bring us, based on what we currently have, to a one-to-one? Or are we expecting any loss with Chromebooks that we've allowed to go home?
I can't hear.
I can't hear me?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Can you hear me? Sorry. So with the amount of, I apologize. And the amount of Chromebooks that we're purchasing will bring us to a one-to-one as of current? What is the percentage loss that we're expecting with the amount that have gone home?
It is hard to tell what the percentage loss is going to be. And we also do anticipate that there is not only going to be a percentage of those that don't come back, but also a percentage of those that do come back that is not be in perfect working order. There is a typical amount of wear and tear on our Chromebooks and we could be replenishing them even when we get to one-to-one. We should be creating a fund to replenish them over the years. I, if I were to guess, I would say that we would need to probably replace about 25% of the Chromebooks for next year. So somewhere close to 2,000. We have not given out all of the Chromebooks yet. We have only given out 4,000 Chromebooks and we have another 625 scheduled for delivery when we do resume deliveries. So part of what we are thinking is that we are unsure if we will give out all of these 2,000 Chromebooks. But we figure that those that we do not could be held in reserve for next year. There was a suggestion by someone on the leadership team that perhaps we should buy more than just the 2,000, that maybe we should, since we have the funds now, purchase 3,000, 3,500. So that is a possibility. I don't know if we would want to discuss that tonight or if we would want to just go to the 2,000 today and then potentially bring that back to the next school committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Sarni?
Is it a better deal to buy them now? Would they give us a discount?
We do have a bulk discount, but currently if we buy 3,000, it's gonna be $600,000. If we buy 2,000, it'll be $400,000. So once we've gotten to that amount, there's no greater discount in going to the 3,000. One thing that we do wonder is if there may be some level of relief that's given by either the state or the federal government for Chromebook purchases now because of the state that we're in. I don't know. That is just a possibility, which is why it could be a good idea to purchase them now in the case that that were to happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Markoni, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Bransky, and I will speak after.
Mr. Bransky?
Mr. Apprazze, just so everybody is aware. And Warren did send this to everybody separately in a separate email Friday afternoon. Even after the Chromebook purchase and even after a couple items later, we're gonna talk about whether we fix the air conditioning. We have a significant balance if we don't pay some of the vendors the services that weren't rendered of $2 million. So just so the school committee is aware, I wanted to go ahead and purchase an additional 1,000 to 1,500 Chromebooks. I do believe the money is there in the budget this year. Where next year, who knows what's going to be the budget? I mean, we know the governor came out with a proposed budget in January, but times have totally changed since January. You don't know what the budget will be like. And right now, it's only a five-to-seven day window on the delivery. Not that we need them, but it'll give the tech people time to come in. They have to load them up. They have to, you know, take them off to trucks, unpack them, do what they need to do with them, code them all, number them all, so that we give them time to do it. That's just for informational purposes, so the school committee members know. Thanks.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just following up to what Mr. Bransky just mentioned. So I know that we have a motion on the table, but perhaps the superintendent could look at the possibility where she just mentioned to buy additional ones more than the 2,000 because I am, for someone who works closely at the State House and follow closely what's going on there, I'm really afraid of the budget that's gonna come out FY21 because of the COVID-19 situation. So we might not be in a position to buy Chromebooks next year. So if we do have the funding now, it is something for the superintendent to look at. I would recommend to buy even more than these 2,000 if we currently can afford. But it is something that you could look at.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Parker?
So I wholeheartedly support that we should move forward on the 2,000 tonight. It is April. The budget closes on June 30th. And as Mr. Bransky said, we're pretty healthy in that regard. So we can go out and buy an additional 1,1300 laptops. Because, you know, as she makes her decision, the 2,000 will get purchased, will get delivered, and as they mentioned, will get staged. So it'll give her that much more time to understand the full need beyond 2,000 laptops. You know, here we are, we're experiencing this event of the virus. What it's actually done is go ahead to the superintendent's goal of one, you know, Chromebook per child, probably about six nine-months older than she anticipated. So, you know, we can certainly take advantage of, you know, the situation from a financial standpoint. And I think we should move forward to just 2,000 right now and never come back at the next meeting with an update for more. Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Della?
I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with Mr. Parker and having listened to Mr. Bransky, I think this is a good idea. If we have the funding now, I do think we should do it. So my suggestion to my colleagues would be rescind the original motion and the second, and let's start over and amended to add in the additional Chromebooks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Sarni?
I'll rescind my motion and make the motion to buy additional books, Chromebooks.
There would be 1,000 different additional Chromebooks?
I believe, Ms. Priya, what did you?
If I, my suggestion would be if we were gonna do it now to do 1,500, so 3,500 in total.
1,500.
So I'll make a motion to additional 1,500 on top of what we already have.
I'll second the motion.
No. No, the quorum would be not 1,500, it would be 3,500.
Total.
Total, yes, yep.
Right. Not, I mean, because some people might think what we already have is the 5,400 that we already have in place.
So just so we're clear, the motion is to accept the purchase of additional Chromebooks in the amount of 3,500 Chromebooks at a cost of that'd be?
$200 apiece.
So it'd be 700,000.
1,000.
Mr. Chairman? If I could, Mr. Bransky, $2 million for services not rendered by certain vendors. What are we talking about?
Not all, it's not all, Mr. Apprazze and the school committee members, not for all services not rendered. But right now, under Massachusetts state law, we can't pay vendors for services that weren't rendered. That's like the Witsen workers, the cafeteria workers if they're not working, transportation company, Malden Transportation, and the after-school program. Now, the Witsen work is totally a separate account. It's the food service account, really has nothing to do with the regular budget. But you look at the balance that provided, if we didn't pay the transportation company for the rest of the days that are in school, which are approximately 61, there'd be a savings of $1 million. And the after-school program would be a savings of 110,000. There are other purchase orders that we would close, Mr. Apprazze. We wouldn't need the same amount of copy paper. We wouldn't need the same amount of supplies in the schools, not using the copy machines at the same rate, so we don't need the same amount of toner. So we would have balance of about $200. Now, there is some guidance from the elementary and secondary ed to the school committee members that come out from the commissioner of the Department of Ed that he asked us to pay them. Talking to Eric Demus, the chief financial officer, and calling Mahir, the city solicitor, on the phone and email multiple times, it is a violation of state law to pay them for services that aren't rendered. But Department of Ed, I was on a phone call today, is afraid that if some, these vendors, especially the transportation companies, don't receive some sort of money, they may go out of business. And then when we start school again, there won't be anybody to service the children. And they are able to apply for small business loans if they're a small company under the stimulus package. Do a grant. A lot of things up in the air right now. But right now, it actually is a violation of Massachusetts state law to pay those vendors for services that are not rendered.
Oh, I just, my question was just in terms of money, where money was going, coming from, going from. I mean, ultimately, I agree with the, I agree with the superintendent that down the road here, hoping that federal or state government gives some relief on top of all this. So, you know, I support the motion. Superintendent feels this is the right way to go. I support it. So the motion that's been made and seconded is to accept the purchase of additional Chromebooks, 3,500 total Chromebooks for a cost of $700,000. This kind of expenditure, I believe we should have a roll call vote.
Tom, Attorney Bob Galvin, all the votes that you're gonna take have to be by roll call vote in a remote session.
Okay. Look at that. I was just thinking ahead, Bob. See that? Pretty good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
I like to make a motion on the amendment, so it reads up to 3,500. So should she decide to, or the administration decided to spend less units? She's got that flexibility in language.
Very good.
I would agree with that too, just because, to your point, I think we'll start with the 2,000 and then we will just make sure that everything is set as far as our vendor payments and the expenditures we may have to make, depending on how that, how those agreements go. And then we'll make an additional purchase as long as we're in a position to do so.
Excellent.
If I can ask for a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion on the table is acceptance of the purchase of additional Chromebooks up to the amount of $3,500 and up to a total of $700,000. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yeah.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Apprazze?
Yes. Seven and the affirmative, zero negative motion passes.
Thank you. So the next item requesting your approval is number two, the acceptance of the amended administrative claims and interim claims that are included in the quarter ending 12/31/19 payment. So those were also included in the packet.
So this?
Mr. Barrows?
I'm just trying to find the item that the superintendent just mentioned.
So while he looks, I'll move a favorable action.
Okay, I found it.
Oh, you got it?
Yep, I did. Thank you.
We got motion for favorable action. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded. For acceptance of the amended administrative claims and interim claims that are included in the quarter ending 7/31/19 payments. Roll call vote.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Apprazze?
Yes. Seven and the affirmative, zero negative motion passes.
Thank you. So number three is the update for the estimate for the Lafayette School and the painting of the Everett High School building, A. And so we did include in the packet the most recent quotes that we have for the Lafayette HVAC system. So you'll see in those quotes that we have two bids right now. One that is for $418,699 and the second for $458,957, as well as a third bid that we're not selecting. So we propose to select the first bid so that we can go ahead and start to purchase the materials and prepare to replace that HVAC system. The other thing that I did want to also mention is that we had discussed the painting of the Everett High School building. In the last meeting, we had said it was building C, but we just wanted to make a correction that the correct building is building A that would be painted. And also, we wanted to clarify that both of these items would be done over the summer. So I welcome any questions regarding this new update.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent, this funding that we are using would be the current fiscal year? Would be funding that would be spent in the next fiscal year?
Current fiscal year.
Current fiscal year? Was that appropriated already or this is something that we found that we have and it's needed?
So it is already included in the budget sheet that we sent to all of you along with the Chromebooks, but it was not an original appropriation for the FY20 budget. So it is new money that, or it is a new, a new expense that we are going to be taking on.
Which I assume would not put us, as you are recommending, would not put us in the red.
Yes.
Mr. Apprazze, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Bransky.
We hear. Mr. Markoni and Ms. Taliana, just to add to that. The HVAC is something that we talked about the last time we had a meeting at the high school. The school committee took a vote to ask us to go out and solicit bids and then bring it back. So that is coming out of this fiscal year. Painting, you actually could do it either way. Right now, I have it in the draft budget that I will be submitting to the superintendent shortly. You know, before we submit it to the school committee. But we could do it either way because the money is available. Either way that you want to take it, but it is in the draft budget proposed for next year, the painting. But if you wanted to take it out of this year, then
Okay.
So you probably have to vote on which fiscal year you want it to come out of, that's all.
From the chair, my question is, the way this is written, are we actually voting to approve the acceptance of this bid?
Well, you asked it, Ms. Apprazze, just to help answer that. When we went out before, I think, I don't know if it was Mrs. Lambert or Mrs. Murray, the last meeting, asked us to talk to the city about possibly paying for it. I did talk to Mr. Demus. I mean, CIP would take too long to get this done. Ready to July 1st. It's a 12 to 16-week lead time in good times. We don't even know if the factory's open right now.
Ms. Murray had the questions, I believe.
And so now we're bringing that in front of you just to be able to give us the go-ahead, especially on the HVAC, so that we can order the equipment. So you'll be voting HVAC. On the Lafayette, I'm just bringing that back to you because I don't actually know the, I mean, the high school building A. I incorrectly stated building C at the last meeting, although I did tell you the correct part of the school. I just labeled the building wrong when I was talking. I apologize. So that's just to bring back. That would be proposed for next year's fiscal budget at this point, unless you people wanted to change it.
Okay.
We haven't got a price on that yet. That would have to go out the formal bid. There's no price on the painting of the high school yet.
Okay, so along with Mr. Barrows' question, so this 418-plus-thousand coming out of current fiscal year budget, that's, it's not going to cripple us, as a matter of fact, we've got the money to cover this.
That's correct. We show a balance even after the purchase of 200 Chromebooks, even if we up it to 3,500. In the HVAC, we still have a balance of about $2 million. So I have no problem recommending this, the way the budget is going at this point in time.
Okay, question, just, and I'm not sure anybody knows this. Based on the moratorium on construction, is this the kind of thing that can actually be done? Or is this something that can't be done right now? If you follow my question?
Okay, so a couple of things to point out. The original estimate, when we met back at the last meeting, was about $469,000. And here is, they got bidged at about $419,000, so it's the savings of what was previously presented, about $50 million. Lead time, as presented by Mr. Bond, is 16 weeks, which is basically three and a half months. So I would think at least the peak of our experience would be over. And hopefully, at that point, the moratorium as a whole will be lifted. So I think, you know, we should move forward in this fiscal year for the upgrades, like actually the replacement of the air conditioning unit at the Lafayette School.
Okay. And this is actually, this is actually, we're purchasing equipment, correct? So it's, that's what's going on?
Yeah, purchasing and install, it's not being leased.
And install. So we're gonna have to do the purchase anyway. The install will be when the install is. Okay. All right. Anybody else?
So the way, the way number three should probably be is probably going in two parts. So therefore, I'll make a motion for favorable action to I don't know the term, the term is pay, but proceed with the low bid by bidder number one for $418,699 for the replacement of the entire air conditioning system at the Lafayette School.
Is that?
Mr. Barrows?
Just one clarification. Was that the bid that the superintendent's recommending?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In add to that, if you don't mind, Frank, the fact that we want to take it out of this year's budget since the money's available.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so motions are made and seconded to, for favorable action to accept the 418-plus-thousand bid for the repair of the Lafayette School HVAC equipment and to have that come out of the, this year's fiscal budget. And it's been seconded. Roll call vote, please, Lauren.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Apprazze?
Yes. Seven and affirmative, zero negative motion passes.
And then, Mr. Chairman, for the second part of three, make a motion for favorable action to allow the administration to go out, go out for bid for the painting of Building A of Everett High School. So that will allow them to go for bid, get us prices, which at that point, we can accept or deny, and also deny whether to do it through the current fiscal year budget or next year's fiscal budget. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to allow the administration to put out for bid painting of Everett High School building A. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yep.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Apprazze?
Yes. Seven and affirmative, zero negative motion passes.
Thank you. And then the final item, number four, for which I'm requesting approval is the acceptance of the following school council minutes for the Adams School from February 25, 2020 and the Madeline English School from February 26, 2020.
Accept the committee report and place on file.
Second.
I guess we need a roll call vote for this also.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Apprazze?
Yes. Seven and affirmative, zero negative motion passes. Rule number five, items submitted by school committee members. Number one, that's Mr. Number one, that's Mr. Barrows' update from the school administration regarding the district district preparedness for the coronavirus. Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was actually a night that I had put it on my the previous meeting, but sadly, I missed the meeting and but the situation was not as bad as it is now. So we know that our buildings are closed. Superintendent, is all of our employees, are all of them, are they okay? Is there anyone who need an assistance? We do not need to know if perhaps there is anyone that is infected by COVID-19, but regardless of that, which that's extremely important, is there any employee who needs assistance from the administration for the school committee? How is the situation right now?
Well, I think that we have done, I put our best foot forward in the fact that we did announce a suspension of all in-person services starting today. We did that out of an abundance of caution now for our employees. So our custodial staff, our cafeteria workers, our volunteers who have been distributing Chromebooks and would have been delivering books this week. So we do have some of our EPS employees who have been quarantined, who do have are symptomatic. And so we just want to make sure that we are being extra careful and watching out for their health moving forward. And I'm also happy if you would like for me to give an overall update on just everything that we've done for COVID-19. I'm happy to give an update as well. I know that you all are familiar with the updates that I've given, but I'm happy to do one to go on record as well.
That would be great.
Okay, so I will then break this into, I think, four different sections, which is communications, lunch distribution, the tech to go program, and remote learning. So, you know, we do believe that consistent communication is key when working through an incredibly stressful situation like this. So following the joint decision that we made with the mayor to close the city of Everett as well as the schools beginning on March 13th, we did send out a number of communications. We've sent out robo calls to families that have been interpreted in Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole regarding the school closures originally, regarding retrieval of medication, which we did the Monday after we closed schools. Also, we have communicated by robo call on the school lunches, and we've made several different phone calls just to update them on the fact that the lunches are still going on and that we expanded to a second site. They received robo calls, two of them regarding the tech to go program, which was the Chromebook distribution that happened last week, as well as another communication about the in-person services being closed, which they received yesterday. We've also been in regular communication with our staff. They received a joint letter from the public school department as well as the Everett Teachers Association regarding distance learning expectations. And also, they also received an email pertaining to the closure of in-person services. And then we have had many communications and consistent meetings with our central office staff and school leaders. We have a memo about the virtual expectations for meetings and a virtual schedule of meetings. And we currently are now meeting with our school leaders multiple times per week, our directors multiple times per week. And the same meeting structures are also trickling down to the school level as well, where they are having grade level content meetings, and they're also meeting with their principals regularly as well. As far as the lunch distribution, we originally launched that at the high school. Due to the ability to provide the drive-through lunch pickup, we did expand to the Whittier site to decrease crowds and to afford families the flexibility to have a more convenient location, one on either side of the city. We have been providing our families not only with lunch but with breakfast for the next morning. And we did upgrade from from sandwiches to frozen entrees in order to make sure that the families could even, you know, save it for the weekend if they would like and to make sure that they, you know, they had a longer shelf life when we were distributing them. So week one for breakfast and lunch, we distributed 5,105 meals. Week two, it was 9,544 meals. And week three was 6,852 meals. So overall, we distributed 21,501 breakfasts and lunches over the last three weeks of distribution. Our tech to go program, want to thank you all again for your input on that and for the idea of having it at the Encore parking lot, the parking lot across from the Encore. I think that ended up being an ideal location for the distribution. Again, we did a drive-through so that we could keep up with the social distancing. Volunteers came from all aspects of the city. We had our city counselors, our school committee members, Everett Fire Department, Police Department, EPS teachers. We and actually teachers from other districts as well. We had parents who came, and we also had school leaders and central office staff. We provided instructions for all of our volunteers in FAQ list. We also provided translation services, not only onsite, but they had mobile services as well, where they could call a translator who was on call in case they needed. Overall, we distributed 4,100 Chromebooks, so that was to about 55% of our EPS students. Lunch was donated two times by Accurate Collision that was right there, and they also played music for all of our volunteers as well, which was really wonderful, and we want to thank them again for that. We also had a day where lunch was provided by the Union Square Deli and a day where it was provided by Bertucci. So we are extremely thankful for their generosity. Encore also donated potted daffodils for all of our volunteers every day, and they came with a new set every day. We have had many requests for Chromebook deliveries. We are up to 500 that were submitted online and 162 that were called into our main line. So we have about 800 remaining Chromebooks that are ready to be distributed, but as you know, we have put that off. So we plan on restarting that initiative in two weeks after this closure, you know, with as long as everything goes well. And if we are able to use those deliveries, that would potentially mean that we distribute Chromebooks for over 60% of our EPS students. And then finally, I wanted to go over our remote learning. So it is incumbent upon the district to provide supplemental opportunity for distance learning to the best extent possible. We did that through printed homework packets that were available at both sites, including available via the EPS website. We now, starting today, have a schedule of activities that you can actually see. If you go to our EPS website, you'll see a calendar for each of our grade levels that walks them through this entire week and is broken down by subject, subject content area. So if you, for example, went into the grade two calendar, you could choose the math activity for Monday, and it takes about 30 to 45 minutes, and a student could go through that platform, which is district-wide, or they will also be hearing regularly from their teachers starting today, who will be posting up one activity a day. So we wanted to make sure they had something that was school-specific but also district-wide as well. And we also have our main office line is being answered by our staff or parent phone calls in order to troubleshoot any issues we've been having with either meal distribution, Chromebook delivery, and rescheduling of the Chromebook deliveries, as well as any questions or concerns about remote learning.
Well, thank you. Well, last but not least, Mr. Chairman, and thank you so much, Superintendent. If you could keep us abreast on our staff, especially those who are in quarantine right now, just check with their families to see if they need any help and assistance, anything that we can do as a district. So just keep us posted on that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
From the chair, if I could, I just want to get on the soapbox for a quick second because I just want to say that unlike other people in power, especially nationally, just want to acknowledge our superintendent, her administration throughout. I think she's acted thoughtfully, decisively, and quite frankly, heroically throughout this unprecedented situation. I think our superintendent has been ahead of the curve throughout this situation. I joked with her a little while ago regarding her March 1st start date versus the July 1st start date. Maybe she'd like to go back and revisit that, but in all seriousness, I cannot imagine anyone providing a better example of true leadership during this time. I just want to acknowledge you, Superintendent Tihaliani, for all you've done during this time.
Thank you so much.
This.
To you, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainties, a lot of doubt as it pertains to education. What's going to happen to this year? When do the kids go back? What the requirements going to be for graduation? Could you just explain to people that are watching that those are decisions made by, you know, Commissioner Riley of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and that, you know, depending on his guidance and when that comes forward and is announced and available, will determine what action we would take?
Absolutely, yes. So we are waiting on guidance because we want to make sure that we are making decisions that are coherent across the state for all of our districts and that are equitable. Obviously, a decision about, you know, matriculating to the next grade needs to be consistent from one district to another, which is why we are all as superintendents waiting on that guidance, which is why any questions that are still remaining, and there are so many that we haven't answered even concerning third-term grades, for example. I do want people to rest assured that these are things that are being thought about and they are being discussed on a broader level amongst all of all superintendents, that we are trying to come to decisions as quickly as possible and that we are giving our input to the commissioner, who will eventually make the final call. But we, yeah, so there is still a lot that remains unknown at this point. Right now, we are supposed to be going back May 4th, in which case we would be able to have graduation. We would be able to, you know, make up for some of this lost time. However, we know that this is a situation that is evolving rapidly, and so we are trying to evolve with it. So for any questions that do still remain outstanding, I appreciate everybody's patience as we try to figure these things out, because I know that there is a lot of anxiety around getting these answers and getting them quickly, because we want our students to feel like they are in a secure position moving forward. And so we are doing our best to get them that guidance, but we want to make sure that it is coming from the entire state and not just from our solely our district.
Mr. Chair.
Who is that?
It's Samantha.
Ms. Lambert, go ahead, please.
Through you to Ms. Tihaliani, Superintendent Tihaliani. I did just want to ask, is there's any specific guidance for our EL and special education students? I know that's been a big topic and a very big concern for parents and families.
Yes, and it is actually something that has even changed over the last few weeks as far as the guidance that has been put out. So one of the things that we're doing right now, since the guidance has changed, is we have actually been working with, for example, Futures, which was one of our vendors, where we were in some unknown space for a little bit of time. But now with the guidance that we have received from the state and we are able to work with them again, they have actually put together a whole plan for how they're supporting the students that they would normally support and how they're going to do that remotely. You know, again, a lot of these things need to be thought out very methodically because, for example, in order to provide some of the services like the PT or OT services remotely, you have to have a extra certification. So they are doing webinars online in order to make sure that they have that extra certification added on to their license so that they can provide those services. So again, as we're getting more guidance, we're making sure that we're using that in order to support our students best. We are part of with our teachers reaching out. They are also in close contact with Mr. Donahue, who is our special education director, who's keeping a very close eye on the regulations as they change and working with our partners and then working with our teachers in order to help them make sure that all of our students, our English learners and our students with disabilities do have access. But sort of like with everything else, it's sort of evolving as we go. We're figuring out the best ways to support those students. It's not a perfect system yet. We're hoping that we'll we'll get better at it as time goes on. But we definitely have those students in mind and serving all students in mind as we plan moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Cardello.
Thank you. A couple of things. I just have to say, Priya and Kim, you've started a whole new precedent here. Most people go out with a bang. You guys decided to come in with one. I'm amazed at what you have accomplished and how well you have worked with the administration that you weren't even familiar with, and they've really got the ball rolling and kept it on going. And I'm so proud to have you here, and I'm so thankful to have you both with us. And I also want to thank the entire administration and all our staff. Everyone has been so wonderful. I've had to reach out to people because of phone calls. I go off with people with questions, whether it's special ed or any type of programs that we normally offer and where we're not open, it's not happening just yet. Everyone has been like quick to respond. I'm just proud to be here, and I and I want to thank everybody publicly for all they have done and will continue to do because that's who we are. And ladies, I say thank you to you because you fit right in, and I'm just so happy you're with us. And my other question is to Priya, just to go back for a minute, because I was taking notes, and I'm not sure I heard you right. Are we serving 5,000 meals a week and making that two meals per bag? Or is that 10,000 a week? One meal per bag?
So that is to that that 5,000 number includes the two meals per bag. It includes the lunch and the breakfast. So we count per meal.
In in your letter that you explained how we were suspending all these services, you mentioned that the mayor was going to be the big part of that and take care of the food needs for us. Do you know how is he going to do that through Anthony's of Malden, who's been supplying our seniors and so forth? Or how is how is this going to happen?
So, yes, so the way that we are doing it is that if we're referring everybody to our food pantries, we also did provide our perishable items that were already that we had already ordered and gotten in. We provided them to the food pantries too, so they could support in distributing them. However, we're asking that our families call 311 or also in the email that went out, we gave them several emails that they could also contact about food delivery if they chose to do the delivery versus having going to one of the food pantries.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello. Anyone else on that? No?
A motion for a back sponsor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer item number one back to sponsor, Mr. Barrows. All those in favor, we're going to go roll call vote on that also.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows? Mr. Barrows?
Yes, I I am I I was mute. I didn't know why. Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Taffersay?
Yes, 70 affirmative, zero negative, items referred back to sponsor. And number two, acceptance of the amended school committee rules and regulations incorporating public comment. Mr. Parker, Ms. Cardello, Mr. Barrows, Ms. Lambert. Yes, Mr. Parker, please.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a long time coming. It's probably been in the works at least about 15, 16 months. Ironically, we're probably going to move to accept this tonight, hopefully. And here we are in a position where we really can't hold public comment. So there's four separate motions I'd like to make to address each part of the changes that we're going to make. But in all fairness to the public, come next week, we'll have a, I'll be putting a piece on the calendar to suspend public hearing until we can meet in a in a live setting. So but, you know, the the members of the Rules Committee wanted it felt that it was important to take action tonight instead of laying on the table to a time uncertain. So therefore, when we come back and up and running, we will be back and up and running for the comment too. So with that, the first motion and is to accept the public comment policy as amended. This is the written policy that was recommended by the M.A.S.A. We made some minor changes to it. So I would move for favorable action, extra second.
Okay, motion made and and seconded to accept the public policy as amended. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Very happily, yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Taffersay?
Yes, and does that mean, Ms. Lambert, all your other yeses are unhappily? 70 affirmative, zero and a negative, motion passes.
Okay, in my, the second motion, I asked for favorable action, is to amend chapter three, Rules of the Order, section one. What are the proceedings by ensuring public comment is number four after number three? Order of proceedings by inserting public comment as number four after number three, reading of the records. All subsequent agenda items to increase by one. They move for favorable action after a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is, could you please read your motion again, Mr. Parker?
To amend Chapter Three, Rules of the Order, Section One. Order of proceedings by inserting public comment as number four after number three, reading of the records, and all subsequent agenda items to increase by one. So basically, what would happen then is our agenda would change from roll call, pledge allegiance, reading the records, reporting to the superintendent, to roll call, pledge allegiance, reading of the records, public comment, and then reporting to the superintendent. I think we fall behind.
There you go. Okay, so motion's made and seconded.
For what Frank said.
Yeah, to amend Chapter Three rules of order, basically putting a public comment as Roman numeral four in our agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative, motion passes.
Okay, so I made two motions so far, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, the third one, to amend the current rules of the elementary school committee by adding public comment to Chapter Three, Rules of Order, as Section Eight. So basically, what it is, if you look at our rules, Section Eight on the rules of order, we're going to be adding public comment to Chapter Three. So I move for favorable action after a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion made to amend our rules to add public comment to Section Eight?
Section Eight of Chapter Three.
Of Section Eight of Chapter Three. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Happily yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative, motion passes.
Okay, and the last motion, it's a minor one. In the public comment language that we've just adopted, allows each person to speak three minutes. And, excuse me, I don't have the total time here in front of me, but I think it's a fifty-minute total period. In the public hearing section of our rules, it gives each person two minutes to talk. So the rules and regulations commit about it best to keep that the same. It has some consistency, but making it three minutes across the board. So therefore, with that, I make the motion to amend Chapter Six, Public Hearing, Section Five. Addressing the committee by deleting the word "two" and replacing it with "three," to read, each person so recognized shall be given three minutes to speak, and shall confine his or her remarks to the subject matter of public hearing. With that, I ask for favorable action and I move for favorable action after a second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to amend Chapter Six, Public Hearing, Section Five. Basically, in addressing the committee, it'll be three minutes to address the committee?
In a public hearing.
At a public hearing. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative, motion passes.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Nice work.
Let me see, Subcommittee Report, so Roman numeral six, Committee on Finance, Mr. Parker.
Sorry, play with the mute button. So there was no finance committee meeting held. We have nothing to accept as far as bills and payrolls go. But per the agenda, our discussion is Mass General Law Forty-One, Section Fifty-Six. So what happened, I think it was like last week, the city council, Wayne's and me, had a meeting, and under direction and guidance of Mr. Demus, who can talk on this, they took a vote, which is allowed per chapter, per section, to allow just one committee member to sign the warrants. Currently, we refer to committee, there's three of us, but due to the circumstances, it probably makes sense to kind of peel that back, or limit that to just one person, so we can, you know, action accordingly, and do it faster and safer. But if I can, I'd like to invite Mr. Demus, just to say a few words, and be available if there's any questions for any members we got in this, Chapter Forty-One, Section Fifty-Six.
Anybody who's second, bring Mr. Demus? The motion made, seconded, bring forth Mr. Demus. Do we have to do roll call vote to bring forth Mr. Demus? I guess we should. Go ahead, roll call, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative. Welcome, Mr. Demus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm glad to see that everyone is doing well. The item before you, Section forty-one, MGL Forty-One Fifty-Six, it allows your finance committee to appoint one specific individual to approve the bills and warrants for both payroll and non-payroll items. This actually isn't something new as a result of this COVID situation. It was actually a change in the statute about three to four years ago with the First Municipal Modernization Act, which tried to streamline things, while at the same time maintaining transparency. The city, we've talked about it on the city side for a couple of years, as recently as last January, this past January. However, given the situation that we're currently facing, trying to set an example and keeping everybody safe, both committee members as well as your staff, we decided to, or the Ways and Means Committee voted to authorize one individual to sign those bills and warrants. You're allowed, once you actually take that action, the individual that is the one that's appointed to sign will then actually, at the next following, Finance Committee be responsible to provide a report on all signatures that were approved. So you're still maintaining transparency and our internal controls, while at the same time recognizing that the more social distancing we can do right now, the better. And this is just a mechanism that allows us to do that.
Questions for Mr. Demus? No questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cardello?
Don't forget, excuse with the customary.
I was waiting for any questions. I can even do that, I can do that virtually, too, absolutely.
That's right.
So if there's no question for Mr. Demus, excuse, yes, with the customary thanks.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too, Mr. Demus, thank you, Eric.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
I'd like to put this in the form of a motion to assign the chairman of the Finance Committee to be that one delegate to sign the bills and payrolls, which would then be presented to the full body for approval.
I'll second that, Frank.
It's Mr. Parker.
Oh, since you're the chairman of the committee, I guess it would be.
I was going to nominate you, Frank.
Parker to be the one individual to sign the bills and payrolls, per Mass General Law Forty-One, Chapter Fifty-Six. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes, I vote for Mr. Parker.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Can I think about that? Yes.
Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one question on that, please?
Yes.
Should there be an alternate person, just in case Mr. Parker can't make it at that time?
This is like the Miss America pageant?
Yeah, and just in case, in case we have to dethrone him.
I would nominate Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, my friend.
Well, okay, so we have to do that, what? So you're making a motion to, in case Mr. Parker can't perform his duties, that Ms. Cardello will assume this role?
Is that your motion, Cynthia?
Yes, my motion would be, Ms. Cardello will be secondary if Mr. Parker cannot perform his duties.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to have Ms. Cardello assume the duties for the chairman of the Finance Committee in signing the bills and payrolls if he's unable to do so. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative, motion passes. Subcommittee Report, number two, the Legal Committee. Who's the chairman of the League? Who's that? Is that Mr. Barrows?
There is no report from the Legal Committee on the agenda that I received.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm looking at, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, so that's a mistake.
No, that was the first draft that wasn't submitted to the clerk's office.
Okay, all right. Okay. I think that's it for, you know, bills and payrolls, unfinished business, new business, hearings. Now we go to Roman numeral eleven, matters for executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session. Reason being, if an open meeting, an open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigation, litigating position of the public body. And we will go into executive session, and any vote for a German of executive session would take place in executive session, and we would not return to the regular meeting. So basically, for those that are watching, if we do approve this, the public viewing portion of the meeting will be over.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to the School Committee to go into executive session. Any votes that are taken or whatever in executive session is reason, because it would be detrimental to have these votes in public forum, and that ultimately, we will actually adjourn from executive session, not return to open session. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Appertse?
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero negative. We have approved going into executive session.
Mr. Appertse, Attorney Bob Allen, yes, I sent everybody on their cell phone the passcode, and the meeting is up and waiting for you all when you can log in.
Okay. So we are now, School Committee is now going into executive session. Thank you, everybody, from the public that watched, and, I mean, do we need a motion to adjourn from regular session?
No, you've already, you'll do that.
We're going into executive session.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. We are now, School Committee is now in, going into executive session.
Thank you.